Yeah, I guess we're gonna have a rule call.
Yes.
Everybody here?
It was only that easy.
Alright, so, uh, member Todd?
Here.
Uh, member McKay?
Here.
Member Duarte?
Here.
Secretary Sutton, let the record reflect that. She did touch base with me, she can't make it today. Uh, Vice Chair Threckel?
Here.
And Chairman Griffiths. Okay, records show that he is also not with us at the moment.
Okay, I guess, uh, called to order, I guess, we got a, uh, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I guess the next thing I have to do is adopt the agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda as written here.
Alright, do we have a second?
Well, we need to ask if the public wants to comment on that first.
Okay. Public wanna comment?
Okay.
Seeing no comment?
Go for it.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Alright, second's, second's done.
You gotta do that all in favor.
Okay, informational report?
All in favor.
We have to have a vote, everyone has to vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hey, aye, cat, carries it. Okay. Information report?
So, I gotta do the public forum next day, right here.
Right there? Okay. That's new to me, you probably have to keep going.
No, you're good, you're doing great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just read the first paragraph.
Oh, right down to the bottom?
Yeah. On the first page. I don't care.
I don't know. Needed the job.
We'll get it.
Okay, public forum, many members of the public address irrigation committees on matters with just utilization authorized. Anyway, anybody got anything on that?
Any public comment? Nope, there is none, no public comment. Now we can go to approval of the minutes.
Okay, now the approval of the minutes. Anybody wanna make a motion?
All motion to approve the minutes.
All second.
It's been moved and seconded. Have a vote?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? It's carried. Okey dokey. Water resources update.
I'll turn that right over to Alexis. You'll notice Adam is not in the room today, um, he is at a training, so Alexis will give the water resource update, and I will give the irrigation season application update.
I'm just looking at mine, right?
Yeah, just, yeah, this is yours.
I guess really the chunk of this one was just highlighting the, basically the extension of the rain that we're gonna continue to get. Um, I know the lake started spilling, so we're full. And then, you know, weather outlook, it's basically gonna continue on what we had this week for a couple more months. Um, I'm thinking at least March, April. But, I mean, it's just what Noah's going off of, and obviously, if anybody has noticed, it changes daily, you know, but I think it's just gonna be a bunch of rain.
I was counting on going swimming at Stumpy like in March.
You can still do it.
I mean, you've got a wet suit, go for it.
I don't see any reason why not. No wet suit, no wet suit needed, right?
No, I think.
Swim suit.
I think it's just gonna be raining for a while.
Okay, I guess we got that taken care of?
Well, hang on, so there is a couple of other things. I just wanna say, at the time, we could talk about this at one of the next, uh, things. We're not recommending a change, as we did last year, to the season. So, right now, we are looking at sometime May 1st or May 15th to, to open the season, just as a, as a preliminary to, to start that discussion.
I have a question. On the report here on page two, is that part of your report, Alexis?
That one's not mine, no. Mine's, um, page four.
Yeah, so, but I can answer any other questions.
How do I read it?
Okay, so this is, uh, this is, this is basically like a long-term average, uh, graph.
Okay.
So, basically, what they're saying is, uh, if you look at the top graph, and it says total inflow, ten percent of the time, we get a hundred and twenty-nine thousand acre feet of water. Twenty-five percent of the time, we get a hundred and twenty thousand, and all the way down to the bottom, where it says ninety-five percent of the time, we will get at least nine thousand. And so, what we're trying to say is how much, how, how many times we will fill, uh, all the way from zero to, to, to twenty thousand.
That makes sense, so it's time down the bottom exceeded some.
Yeah, there wasn't any time on there, and I couldn't figure out, you know, what, where's the months, where's the years, what are we looking at? Yeah, and the bottom is, is how we take water out of the system. So, it's the opposite. It's when we use water through irrigation and through treated water, how it is reflected in the actual storage levels of Stumpy. And then, the dotted line, nineteen seventy-seven, that's the lowest we've ever gotten. And the twenty-twenty-one was the second lowest we've ever gotten. Does that help?
Oh, yeah, no, that's huge. I can read it now.
It is a little confusing, it's a, it's a long-term, uh, long-term averages type thing.
That makes complete sense, now.
So, in twenty, it was interesting, because in twenty fifteen, they shut irrigation off in August.
Twenty fifteen was before my time.
No, no, I understand, but I'm, you know, I'm looking at these, you know, nineteen seventy-seven was the lowest, but then they shut down irrigation in twenty fifteen.
Yep.
So, wouldn't that have been in here somewhere?
Um, I can look back and see how much storage was, but.
I was just curious, because that was when I came, and irrigation got shut up August 1st.
Yeah, I'd have to do some research, yeah, I know twenty fifteen was a low year.
Yeah.
Uh, but seventy-seven was the lowest two years of rainfall, seventy-six and seventy-seven, in the entire history of the state. And so, that's probably why seventy-seven was so bad, because it didn't fill for two years. Uh, in twenty-one, uh, that was, I, I would have to go back and look at the hydrology, and see what, what years and what was the difference. It could be a typo, I don't know. Let me get back to you on that.
Just trivia.
Yeah.
Okay, irrigation season application response?
So, yeah, we were asked by the committee, um, to give a update on what, how many apps we have received applications. So, we're still pretty early into the season, but we had last year three hundred and seventy-nine active accounts. We have received a hundred and fifty-three applic- applications already. Uh, three inactive services are now requesting new service. One is requesting additional inches, and one is decreasing ish, uh, inches from one inch to one-half inch. So, and I don't know how much is adding, how much they're adding from the one that's adding. So, those are the numbers that we were asked to gather. Like I said, we're still very early into the process, so that's, that's good news, and it's more than half of them coming back already.
That's good.
Which I think is, uh, probably normal, but seems, seems like we're well on the way.
Cool.
I do have one other update informational-wise. Uh, we still have an opening on the committee, so if there's anybody in the community that you know that might wanna do their duty and do their service, and we still have one opening, uh, you can just email me, or email, uh, Elizabeth, for interest in that position.
Okay, next item, review of current.
Wait, hang on, there was a question, were you?
Future water.
I just wanted to comment. Um, I applaud that you are now emailing and you receive the applications. It was really nice to receive that email.
Oh, good, yes.
Yeah, it just, you know, I never really worried about it before, but it really just took some, you know, angst off.
Oh, that's great, I'm glad to hear that.
I appreciate it.
Excellent, that's good feedback.
Thank you.
Any more comments on this? Okay, uh, review of current and future water season?
So, like I said before, um, right now, with the, so we're spelling, we started spelling January thirty-first, uh, which is great news. Uh, looking at where we are in the system, and where the, uh, water supply and water infrastructure is, we're definitely not in the same situation as we were last year. So, as of right now, we will likely be recommending a May 1st start. Um, if there's any changes that the committee wants to input, you know, now's the time, and we can present that, and we will again present that next month, before we go to the board in April, to make the final decision.
That's somebody who.
I don't know what the current, um, thought processes are for continuing it through Oc- um, October, regardless of when it starts.
It is not likely that we will do that, unless we see a need to do that. So, if there's something from the committee that says, yes, we wanna do that, the big issue we face with that is that's adding a month of service and a month of payment on to the end of that. So, uh, that would probably be the biggest, um, hiccup in any of that. Now, I know that some of the people would be okay with that, but not everybody would be, so we would have to have some sort of, of agreement from the board, that they wanna do that.
My concern is the fire, that, I mean, that, that is not gonna go away. And I don't, I would kinda like to see it, um, you know, immortalized somehow, so that we don't decide it every year as to whether we can, you know, do that. Do you have predictors? I mean, is that what, all of these charts and everything, are there predictors to try to?
We try to do as best as we can, we have no crystal balls.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, we try to look forward. Now, if it came to be August, and we could see that it's getting to be hot and dry, we could absolutely extend the season in season. Uh, that's probably easier to do than to set it up, the way, uh, to do it ahead of time, yeah.
I have a question.
Go for it.
What do you mean, the conditions aren't the same as it was last year?
The conditions aren't, we didn't have a fire this winter?
It was two years ago.
Yeah, well, last year, we decided to start later, because we were still working on cleaning out, uh, debris, and having infrastructure issues that were in the, uh, upper canal area.
Well, I recall that being a, a good part of it. But we also wanted to start later, 'cause of the fire, we had gotten so wet during this time of the year, as we are now.
That, that is, that was part of it, but there was two.
We couldn't physically push water, like, as early as May, 'cause the ditches were so silted in.
Yeah.
No, I just don't understand that, but that, that was, that was the main reason.
Yeah.
As far, as far as physically being able to do it.
Yeah.
But, when I, when I was involved in it, it was, more the focus was to start later for fire.
Yeah.
Well, we had soggy spring, we had a real soggy spring.
And we had.
Yeah, that was why we pushed it back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't remember it being so much, you guys couldn't push the water, it was that, it was just too wet.
We physically could not have supplied water on May 1st.
We couldn't get the water in the ditch.
I guess, so that's one of the things on the report that we need to see, for the water, the water report going forward, is what is your, what is the district availability to push the water to the irrigation customers also? Not just the quantity or the flow potential. And that's what we didn't have laid out. I don't remember that, maybe you guys do, but I don't remember that being a, a discussion issue at the time when we, when we made the recommendation to the board to push it to the thirtieth.
But it was, I think that discussion was held at the board, at the board, the board discussed all that.
Yeah, we pu- we pushed it up too, and because we felt it was too wet, and we needed to start later.
It was, it was, it was two pieces to that puzzle. It was too wet, and we just physically weren't, if we would have pushed it, we probably could have got water out May 1st. It was, it was unlikely to have a full flow of water to all customers by May 1st.
I think what made me the confusion is, is that at the irrigation meeting, discussion was held about it being a wet, you know, everything was wet, and we started late for that.
Yes.
And then, the irrigation committee made the recommendation to the board, and that the board meeting was when all this was brought up about the, that was on the other thing.
That seemed like that was the second part, that was like, oh, no, we knew it because of that.
Right.
I think that our discussion was more about the fire.
Exactly, and I think the, you know, settling it was done by the fact that they couldn't do it, so it tells that, sells that right there.
Right, right.
So, so the reason for this action item is, it's kind of a standing action item, is at any time, a committee member can make a recommendation as to what the season, how, how you'd like to see the season held. You know, traditionally, it's been May 1st to October, well, I guess it's September 30th. Uh, I know that we've also discussed doing May 15th to October 15th. And then, last year, we had June 1st to November 1st, or November 31st, October 31st.
End of October.
Yeah, so, so we can go with any of those. What, what we would ask is that you would make a recommendation to the board, and then, and then us as staff, we can write it up, and we can give that recommendation to the board. I think that's, that would be, you as a committee, what you're here for is, hey, we're in the field, we're users of this system, we want it here, and we think that the people around us, who are also users of the system, want it here as well. Um, and I do see, uh, we have a question online from Mr. Campbell.
Ah, Mr. Campbell, what's your question?
Yeah, so, yeah, so this is just relating to, you know, you've got this, um, it's somewhat related to this issue, but, um, at this present point in time, you don't have any known maintenance issues that would cause a delay for a May 1st start this season?
As of right now, we do not, but, you know, I can't, again, no crystal balls here, so something could happen.
Yeah, no.
We did have some, some.
Recording in progress.
Issue, windstorms, and if we have, continue to have windstorms, you know, that could always pose a, a risk, but we're getting those cleaned out as fast as we can.
Under- understood. And then, I guess I would just have a final comment, given the consideration that, you know, all sort of rehashing the confusion from last season, that, you know, we're, I guess, more transparent in the reason why there might be a push in from a May 1st to a May 15th, or an October, or a, a, a June 1st start. Yeah, it was definitely confusing last season, kinda like, well, this is what the irrigation committee said, this is what the board said. And it sounds like that confusion is still present, so hopefully, hopefully, we can, uh, avoid, avoid those concerns this season.
Great. So, you're welcome to make, oh, sorry, let me do, go ahead.
So, that, yeah, that's kinda my point, is what I was trying to bring up, is that whatever information you're planning on taking to the board, it should have come here, so that everybody here would.
It was mentioned here at the committee level, but probably not as, uh, in, in depth as it was at the board level.
Um, is there a recommendation from the firefighters?
Uh, you know, we don't pose that to them, so.
Because if we're concerned about the fires, is there an inability for them to get water, if the water is cut out from the irrigation system? Or is it just the homeowner is having access to water in irrigation that people are concerned about?
I would say it's more homeowners, 'cause the firefighters, we have raw water fire hydrants up, up there that they can access, and they can put water from, or they can put water directly from the ditch, like they were doing during the fire. Um, and so, they, they have options. If this is more, I would say, for peace of mind, and for homeowners to keep, uh, the green belt.
Well, and the pond up. Because if the water is cut off early, then multiple ponds will be pretty low, and then those helicopters won't be able to suck out of those ponds, and that's what I've watched them do at the lower end, you know, the Cool Pilot Hill area. Um, they come out of the ponds.
And they do it up on Hanson as well.
Yeah, so, that's, that's one of the considerations, and maybe that's something we should add.
I can ask, if I go to the fire season council meetings, I can kind of toss a signal there. And see if they have any.
If they wanna have input.
Yeah. And kind of want the projection or, or box on that.
It just gets a different set of eyes in, looking at the situation.
Yeah, and they'll have a better, they'll have like the historical records, like we have a lake level of a fire, so. I would think they have an idea on it, but.
So, I would say, uh, is there any kind of recommendations from the committee, and it can change, you don't have to make it today, you can make it next time? But, you know, how, how do you all see, uh, the season going forward from, you know, today? Do you guys wanna move it to May 15, to October 15? Do you guys wanna continue with where we were last year?
I, I, I think that's kind of premature, but I think it needs to be done, uh, to address the concerns we had last time, because there didn't seem to be much knowledge, and most of that's because people don't come to the meetings and all that. But I think you can get some kind of word out, whether it be Facebook or somewhere, to let people know this is being discussed at the meetings.
We, we have in the newsletter, and we have asked and invited people, and we're going to invite people, bring them through, through the mailers and stuff like that. We, we sent letters to every irrigation customer, that basically said what we're discussing, that this is, this is where we discuss it, how we discuss it, and we'd love your input.
Okay, alright.
Any more questions?
I'll give one more, uh, Chris, is that it lined up? I'm not sure, or Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, I, I re- I re- raised my hand, yeah, I guess I would say that it is a bit premature to settle in on a, settle in on a date, because we don't know what O and M is, concerns are gonna be, and how the, sort of, the wet season is gonna continue to play out. Um, but I would advocate for the folks that are at the end of the irrigation system, that are lower down in elevation, that a May 1st start, especially last year, wo- would have been nice. Abs- absent the, the maintenance issues from last year, a May 1st start still would have been nice, because we are lower down in the system, and we dry out faster. And we're trying to let, you know, in my case, have irrigated pasture for cows, so it's, uh, it, it, the, the irrigated pasture took a hit because of that one month of, of cutoff irrigation early in the season.
Yeah, and so, just to clarify, I'm not asking for any firm recommendations from the committee, but if you, you all wanna start discussing how, when, where you wanna, you know, have the season go, we can start that discussion now, and we can continue it next month. So, next month is when you will have to take some formal position, if you wanna have a recommendation to the board, uh, because the board will be making a decision in April at the beginning, uh, of when to start dating the weeks.
I would like to ask Mr. Campbell how the other side, the, um, I mean, water in October affected his operations. Mr. Campbell?
I didn't quite need all that water in October, actually, and I wasn't really concerned about the fire season in a row where I'm at, because I've got cows and next to a ranch that grazes. So, less concerned about the need for a green belt, per se, where, where we're grazing within, within the HOA, so, um, I was good. I had more water than I needed, actually, at the end of the season, 'cause, you know, at, by that time, things are already starting to, to wane in terms of productivity. Right, so I really needed the water to, to boost, you know, irrigated pasture productivity early in the season, not at the end of, the end of the season. So, from a, from an agricultural perspective, I needed it sooner than later.
Thank you.
Even, can I ask, even as wet as it was in May, um, I mean, I, I don't know how far down you are in the system, but it was really wet and green in May, and didn't even start, stop raining until almost June.
So, we're down in, I'm down in Pilot Hill, pretty much at the, I believe, at the bottom end of the system, before it then dumps into Pilot Creek, and goes on down to, to, uh, Folsom Lake. So, we do dry out faster than folks higher up in elevation. So, I, I was, you know, I basically made the call, because we started drying out too fast, to basically bail hay at that point.
Oh, okay.
Rather than leaving, you know, dry and standing grass on the field, that, you know, why would I try to irrigate over the top of stuff that's already, sort of, been dried out?
Got it, got it.
Well, couldn't, couldn't, where Pilot Hill is down there, there's a reservoir down there, a pretty good-sized one, where the water takes care of those people. Wouldn't it be possible to start the irrigation season a little earlier for them, because?
It would be very hard to do that.
Really?
Why is this gonna happen? I mean, the system has been as it is for a hundred years, a hundred and fifty years. Are there modifications, are there improvements, other than just putting cement all over the place, um, to address some of these concerns that are different in all these little microclimates? And that's maybe not a discussion for today, I just wanna throw it out, that is, you know, maybe that's the direction we should be starting to think.
Anything is possible, it all depends on how much it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
So, operating a portion of the canal system is, is difficult. Um, and operating, you know, building the reservoir, it, it, it's technically feasible, we can look into it, but modifying what we have now would, let's look into it.
Yeah, 'cause the only thing is, you, you have to run down to there anyway, close up all the waste gates, and then, people will open their own boxes as, as, as water gets down there. So, if the boxes are closed on the upper end, you can still run water down there to Pilot Hill.
Yeah.
And I think one of the issues would be to stop the fingers, and, and, and working on all the offshoots, keeping water out of those offshoots.
Right.
Do you start at the end, and open up those lines that direction, or do you start up here?
Uh, that would be a question, maybe Alexis can help with that.
A few times that I ran the main ditch that doesn't go down to Pilot Hill, yeah, we started down at the bottom. You do start, that's where you're gonna see the biggest fluctuation. So, if we were to open it top, it'd be dry, Wagner is the reservoir at the bottom there. And it's really hard with the ditch being open, to keep water in that. Like, it, it swings like all summer, or all irrigation season, 'cause it's just, it depends on when people are taking it, where it's spilling, if anything happens, somebody's got, you know, a broken service that they haven't notified us about. Like, if any little change, just swings that pond a lot.
Well, isn't that what we talked about before? Trying to have, if people wanted more water, you know, along a period of time, one customer or two customers that are large customers on those kind of systems, where the, where the bottom of the pond, that gate can be dropped or raised to accommodate that. There are options in there, I can, from when I've been there.
And like I said, anything is possible, but operating one section or one area of the system for the benefit of, say, one or two customers is very difficult. It's not, and not, as I'd say, it's not doable, but it's, it's gonna cost a lot more, and you're gonna be taking these two or three customers, and you're gonna expounding that cost on all of the customers.
Well, this is interesting, 'cause before, it was either all or nothing. Now, we're looking at what conditions would cause us to shift this season. I think we need to have some historical perspective on this, if people can remember.
As far as I understand, the last year was the first time it's ever been moved.
Okay, so, then what are the other factors that we should look at to consider the system? Certainly, checking with fire department, to see if in an emergency, do they want it open again? The answer may be no, and that's okay. Certainly, things like, you know, looking at if there's any valves in the system that we could put in, um, that could be open, so that one section gets the water in case of emergency.
Definitely something that we consider.
Yeah.
Can we ask that if you look into?
Yeah, I, I will. We'll do the best we can, uh, and to get water to specific locations, I'm sure it's doable. Uh, we just would have to figure out how to stop it from getting to the other areas, and that's where I, I would have to do some more research on my own as well.
I've got one kind of question. Um, when do you guys start running down the, down the ditch, checking stuff, and then, I noticed some of the stuff on Chiraffers was cleaned already?
Yes, we're basically doing it constantly.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Well, I guess what would be nice to bring back the historical, when, when we've had changes to the.
So, as far as I understand, we've never changed the schedule ever. Last year was the first time in the entire system.
I think, I think, you know, one, twenty fifteen, we cut the water short early.
Well, that's.
And then, so there's, I think, one other time, I wanna say we moved it two weeks, um, since I've been up here. But, that would be some good information to come back.
With, uh, the vineyard operation.
With uh for our vineyard operation, we would we will request uh later start, May fifteenth would be great, having the water in the heat and the whole harvest. Last year was really successful for us. We really appreciated that. And this year we would think that May fifteenth could be a nice well, we can ask, right? And it's gotta say that
You're a community member, you can actually recommend.
That's uh, that works really well, having having the water in that in uh October can still get pretty hot.
The only thing I saw that was negative about going to October was that people were cutting the water off. They were not using their water. They were not, you know, they were just stopped using it. Because all of a sudden I've got all this extra water coming down. I mean, I'm just blasting sprinklers and everything. Cuz it was raining and nobody, everybody was shutting everything off. And I was still in my pond up. Um but clearly we need to make that information very clear. And no matter what we do with that system, they still gotta run their their irrigation. They can't cut it off just because oops, I don't want to for whatever reason. We don't have that problem down in Pilot Hill. We run it when we need it. You may have different needs along your arm, and that is something we need to look into as well.
What do you mean by needs?
Because I don't need to run it all the all the time.
You have to run it all the time.
I don't need to run it all the time, no door do my neighbors cuz we have the pond there that can, the reservoir. You may need to have everybody on your link run it all the time cuz you don't have a reservoir or something that you could use to even out the water.
I think you said.
Yeah.
Okay. Right. Cuz I know there's like it on my leg, it's like when they turn it off and turn it on, I can watch those sprinklers just where they're not moving, so.
Well, that's the biggest problem on the end of the Chiraffers ditch is people turn it off, then the then the guy come along checking the checking the everything. Wow, everything's running down the hill here. I gotta cut water down. And then they open up and then we ain't got no
We start getting phone calls.
Yeah.
What happened to the tank you were gonna put there? Well, with uh the weather and stuff, we have not had a chance to do it and we're still working on some environmental to make sure that it's legal to do what we're trying to do there.
I think at the last irrigation meeting, didn't we make a consensus that we were going to send a pamphlet out or a letter
We did.
with the bill and so that we could do it to not to shut the water off.
Yes, we did.
If you got irrigation, keep it running.
We sent the whole, we sent the whole word, everybody. We sent a letter, we sent a lot of information and then we have a on the agenda to go over the mailer as well today.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody got that squared away?
I think, Mr. Campbell, I just wanna make sure, is your hand still up or are you
Yeah, well, yeah. Wha- wha- one, just one final comment, maybe you're gonna get this, get to this in a another agenda item, but it, you know, it does relate to, you know, identifying the start of the irrigation season or what that irrigation season wants to be is has that has that survey gone out to landowners that use water? I use water for this purpose. But so you know the cross section, the distribution of what your, what your users actually use our water for?
At the last meeting, we were given direction not to do a survey.
They ask what you use on the application, right?
Yeah, it's on the application.
By the board?
Well, it it's on the application, so as long as you fill out the application, that's where the survey is. There's a couple of questions on the application.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, that's a little confusing. Yes, we were gonna do a separate survey, but the the questions that we were gonna ask on the survey are already on the application. And so we were gonna do something separate as a as a standalone survey.
Any more on this subject?
Okay.
Now we'll go on to the next one.
I'm all good, thanks.
Review of irrigation tutorial videos. Possible action review and develop suggestions for irrigation media.
So we have some videos that are on our YouTube and uh we're gonna play those for you so you can see um what people can view and if you have any suggestions or things you wanna see or additional videos that you think might be helpful, that would be that time.
So um we put together two, um there's box service and screen service are kind of the common setups in the system. And just kind of shared with people.
Well, I think the people in the room are gonna watch.
Let's, sorry, guys, in a moment.
Are you able to just duplicate your screen so it shows up on
We're good, then hang on.
Scotty Kilmer, uh doing this YouTube video, you know Scotty Kilmer?
Hey, you guys should see it right now, but we're gonna start it over anyway.
I can see it, yeah.
I should have trialed this one.
Thanks, Adam. Hold on, we're trying to get the volume to work, right?
There you go, it's it should just work.
Okay, um sometimes to, there's an automatic thing you can do to put the captions on YouTube videos.
You know, we should, you know, you just look it right there.
Oh, I see.
All right, my apologies, everyone.
Well, you can read what he's saying anyway, so we can see the video, unfortunately.
These are on our YouTube, so we have an irrigation playlist.
There's CH tenors.
I think you're supposed to say
Ditch tenders. On the caption. It's interesting. Especially from Australian accent. Big little thing way over there.
Right. It says full screen, wait a minute. So that's where the box looks like.
Yeah, and so then the second one is
Yeah, they're just got a weird little base plate. I have to get him to speak clearly when it comes to ditch.
He probably is.
Yeah.
He probably turned his head and it, I'm sure it sounds like it, but you, he did any kind of movement, it's
That's real clean.
Doesn't look like mine.
Yeah.
And one of the nice things about this is it kind of lets clients know that, you know, we'll help them with these things. They can call in and get the services as opposed to trying to make it so it might adjust the levels themselves.
Then one of the other things that would be good
Will you go?
To let them know.
To um
Hey, Ray Ray made it.
I wanna show them the where to find them.
One of the other things while they're doing that is that if you need any repairs to do to your service that you um definitely not today, um that you contact the district for your service to be shut off so that we you can make the repairs and then bring it the service back up.
Yes. We touched on it. I remember we talked about it, like if you have any issues, like
But I mean
cleaning all that stuff to just get over the district.
Cuz if you if you aren't specific, then they're not going to, no, what's
You need to repair a pipe or something.
Yes, if if something that if your your sprinkler or some pipe in your irrigation system in progress, please contact us. We will shut the your service off so you can do the repair. Call us and we can, you know, put your service back on.
Yeah.
And so that just shut it off for no reason.
We can add to them. Let's know how to ship them together so we can always just
So real quick, our uh if you just type in G D P U D, oh, you got it. Uh on on YouTube, it it'll bring up all of our our videos. So we'll make um some playlists that have just the irrigation videos. Uh are you sharing that?
Uh not with online.
We're gonna share one thing with online real quick so you can see. Well, anyway, there's a, there's several playlists. One is um irrigation committee meetings. We have um board of director meetings, when then we have irrigation tutorial meetings, so you can see the playlists right there. So you don't have to like wade through and look for all the different videos. You can just look for those couple. So I guess, you know, unfortunately, we didn't get the sound to play. We'd probably redo it, make the sound play. But you can review, you know, on your own time. If there's any additional items, I know somebody said um what would we just have uh about calling in in case you have to get something repaired? We can make sure that that's in there, or or is there any other irrigation videos or any kind of tutorial videos we want to include additionally? It's on irrigation. We could do that though for for freedom, but we can actually It will probably not be irrigation for a really long time.
Yeah.
You know, three hundred and seventy nine angry people.
Well, then one of them left a direct line to your phone.
You just attach it to the pipe that you put in it. So if there's any other videos that we should do or other information, I guess now's the time to let us know. Or what do you think? That we're getting these up there so people can uh, you know, kind of see what this is all about. And I promise there's really sound. And you can subscribe to us and you can uh, you know, get notifications if we put out any other additional meeting or videos, excuse me.
Well, that's one of the things I was, you know, it issues problems. You know, like the running the water twenty four seven, go over that specifically so they understand what that means. I mean, you guys know what it means. I know what it means, but a lot of customers don't or don't care or whatever. And or do they need to know that their irrigation service could be stopped if they continue to um intermittently on off their system? And that's one of the biggest, that's one of the biggest expenses to the uh district is running back and forth, trying to jog that system and keep it going for everybody and not get all the calls.
Yes, it is quite frustrating.
So if we can show show the problems it causes, shows the, you know, go over, go over that.
Some of those may be difficult, but we can do the best we can. We can try to. Uh Vice Chairman, I believe we have a comment for Ms. Cherie.
Ms. Cherie, you have a comment?
You're unmuted, Cherie.
Oh, oh, I meant.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, I think I got it now. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, it in the future, can you put the link to the YouTube if you're showing videos like this? Either put it in the agenda or and or on the website under the meeting date. Cuz and I can hear the audio on my YouTube.
Great. So it's uh just for the record, it's youtube dot com front slash the at sign G D P U D, the number one. So for the record
Yeah, I had no I had no trouble finding it, so.
I hear you, Cherie. I can I can do that for you.
Is that put on our website, like right on the front page?
It's on the irrigation now range as well, so there's two places.
Okay.
We have links on our website, yes, to it.
Right, right, no, I meant like uh a little, I mean, I hate even admitting pushing this, but you know, have something that says meetings, YouTube, you know, this is the YouTube site and just lay it out there on our on the front page somewhere.
So when you go to our website, on the top right are the icons for our social media. So you can just like click the YouTube one here right there.
But is anybody else gonna know that?
Anybody who uses social media?
Yeah.
That's, these are, these are what everybody has, they're links. Well, I mean, I'm not trying to
That website, am I gonna go click, 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 click? No.
But but if you're, but if you're an avid user, you're gonna know, people put those symbols cuz we have our Facebook there and it takes you to our Facebook page as well. I mean
Okay.
You could, however, we could click here to go to our YouTube.
Make a special button that says Donna.
Click here, Donna, click here.
Okay, I I I I wouldn't have known what that was either. It does say YouTube, it's just the icon. Not a lot of people know what all the icons are. Yeah, you're welcome.
The error button. We don't have any control over what their icon looks like. Just like the Facebook is the F, it's their logos. We don't have any control over the logos.
I mean, I guess during season, we could put it on the carousel, the the images that
Just add it to the carousel and we can just say, follow us on social media and that's it.
Yeah.
Any more comments on this subject? If not, we'll go on to review and discuss irrigation season mailer.
Uh so the mailer, we have put this out um couple of times ago and we were told that it was too small of writing.
Yes, it was.
So we tried
By who?
But I wasn't gonna call you out. Director Thornbro said he couldn't read it cuz his eyes are old.
I'm not quite sure I expanded on it that much.
Oh, now you don't want it.
Hey, you gotta take care of the older generation.
That's right.
We got a lot of knowledge.
So there is two mailers on here. One of them is kind of a a general information mailer that we will send out probably sometime in March before the season starts, March, April, before season starts. It's more or less, this is what you guys are hoping for. So um it talks about the backflow certifications. It's a backflow certification that records annually and must be submitted to the district prior to service activation. And we also have um irrigation allotments are required to be used continuously as uh Director Seaman uh likes to say. So it's that um uh bold, you know, here's what you have. And then we also talk about irrigation committee and when it meets the third Tuesday every month, the meetings are open to the public. The committee currently has an opening, you know, maybe we can bold bold that or underline that so that we can have that uh a little stronger. Uh but so this is what, just a general mailer, this will go to all irrigation customers. We can, we could send this to all customers. It's gonna cost more. Uh I think I would say just send it to the irrigation customers at this time. And then if you continue just to look, then there is a targeted mailer that will go to specific areas. And we will say that there is miners inches available within your specific service area. And so we can target different uh lengths of this canal system and say you know, for you, there's inches available if you'd like to have more. And so this says uh what available raw water, there's a, there is available miners inches in your area. Parties interested in establishing irrigation service are encouraged to contact the district. The district may not be able to meet all service requests as supplies are limited. And then established or interested customers may find that they must cross neighboring properties to reach G D P U D irrigation supplies. In these cases, it is up to the customer to obtain the necessary easements and construct the conduit to obtain the water. Uh certified backflow prevention assembly may be required prior to service activation. So that'll be a more targeted mailer to those people who want to add inches to their service.
Yeah, sounds good.
You have, you 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 look like you have comments. Well
Do you guys have any comments?
I think you should say will be required.
Well, that was, that's the second one.
Well, you don't know cuz not everybody has a requirement. But not everyone, unless you get treated water, if you don't get treated water, you're on well, you do not have to put a backflow, so that's why it's And it's not will, it's shale. Will is not a legal word. May and shale would be the legal words.
So on the first one.
Yes, I'm Yes, I'm looking at the first one.
I was looking at maybe changing some wording on it for, and I don't think my English is correct after we read it again. But it says backflow devices must be installed, certified or recertified prior to service activation. Instead of the way you have it, and then irrigation and.
Don't go too far, let's talk about the first one, then we'll continue down for comments. So you're saying, say what your comment was one more time, I'm not sure you wanna change that.
It gets away.
Devices must be installed, certified. Well, no, it doesn't matter, certified or recert, they had to be certified every year.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a yearly requirement, that's why we're saying.
That's why I put recertified, because some people have to get installed and certified.
It, when they install it, they certify as they install it.
Isn't it actually an inspection answer and result in certification?
It's not, the inspection is part of the certification.
Yeah.
The inspection is just a visual inspection to make.
When you call the, 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 to get this service done, it's the complete service. And it's called getting it certified.
Yeah, I like this language because it's, it's pretty simple, and if I'm calling my service, I can just read this and say, hey. G pod says I need backflow certification and you're like, do you know what they mean and they, yep, and they trot out and they. Send me the bill and everybody's happy.
Okay, let me try again, on the second line.
Nope, we don't like that either.
I just wanted to get rid of allotment and say irrigation water instead of allotment.
But allotments are what you have as a, uh.
You gotta remember, you gotta drill it down, the people who don't know what these words are gonna mean.
But, but that's, you're saying irrigation water, so they could say, well, I'm using most of my irrigation water. I'm using, I'm using one inch of my two inches.
Irrigation water is required to be used continuous, continuously.
Yes.
Twenty-four seven, this is not as, as needed service.
If you wanna change it, I would say to, your entire irrigation allotment is required.
Okay, but something where we've gotta have it where they need to be using their service twenty-four seven. We, and, and again. The people in Pilot Hill use their service. It's just not on a continuous basis.
You're different because you're in a pipeline, so yours, pipeline is partially pressurized.
Yep.
So that's a lot different than what most of the district has to fight.
Most is just free flow.
Correct, and it's all gravity and they have to have, as, uh, uh. Mr. Greckle was saying, there are people who turn it off and so then it goes up and then our guys turn it down. And then their box is here, and so this, this is going like this the whole time, based on what other people are doing, and so if. Somebody's not continuously using it, they turn theirs off, then it goes too high, it starts overflowing, and then we turn it down and it goes down below their outlet.
And it costs the district a lot of money to play that little. Understand that.
And you really can't.
But you can't. See, so we're on a different system.
Yeah.
Cause we've got a pipe. But we gotta look at what ninety percent of the people are having.
Yeah.
That's the issue.
Well, and it could affect the pipelines. Pond goes low enough, you're gonna have less pressure.
Yeah.
Of course, I know, I was down, I lived in Pilot Hill for twenty years and had irrigation water down there, took two inches. And I never had a fluctuation anytime, it was just.
Yeah.
Far more pressure than, you know, I would get it up where I'm at now, cause. I get, some come into the stuff, but I'm wondering on top of the hill, I gotta pump, I gotta pump it up there.
So, so could we put a little bit of wiggle room in here?
Don't have to use it consistently because they're not all the same thing, she's, I think she's saying.
I understand.
The pipe versus open.
But, if I understand what you're saying, is it is running continuously from the ditch to your pond, then you guys take out of the pond, right?
Yeah, the pond's over, um, the other side of Rattlesnake Bar.
Basically, after the pond, there's a, it, it's a pipe system, so no opening nails down there, and so the pipe, it, it. Pressurizes itself by gravity, so there's not like a pump or anything we pump it into, but because it's. It's enough of a system that it can pressurize the, the, the piping system, they can turn stuff on and off like. People would at their houses, like the hose.
Okay, I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try this again. The canal feeds the pond, their pond.
Correct.
They draw out of their pond, this is what she was saying.
It's our pond.
It's our pond.
Oh.
It's a pond in Pilot Hill.
So where's their measured service?
At their house.
At their house, yeah.
So their house. The, the pipe is owned by the district.
They got a little, they got a little thing in there like this with little rubber.
Right, okay.
Things in there and that's what, that's how they, that's how they ju- get the, get the water, really, it's not as much of a hassle. As far as I wouldn't think for the water, cause it's coming out of the dam. And, and therefore, basically, if she's not taking water, it's not really affecting anybody because. All, all, all it does is the dam comes up, it's not like us where you got boxes in the system. And somebody shuts their water off and the ditch tender comes down and says, oh hell, man, uh, water's running all over the place, let's. You know, readjust.
Mm-hmm, and we've had damage because of that.
Yeah.
That's the district. You know, I understand why you wanna do that, it's just that it's not applicable to the area that I'm in.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's as much of a problem on the pipeline, because the dam's there.
Can we?
All it's gonna do is the dam's gonna build up and come down.
Got everybody shutting it off, then we're gonna get overflow from no one taking water.
So, let's just. Cause it hasn't been a problem since we've been in there, let's just watch it this year. And see if there's a problem. There has been a problem, and that problem, it's been a monetary problem for the district, because. Because the boxes have overflowed.
It's a district wide issue. I've been on that ditch and had to dig out people's hole valves that have been buried for years because they're clogged, because it's going like this and it's sucking dirt in.
Okay, was that at the, the Pilot Hill?
Yes.
Okay.
The one that goes down Rattlesnake Bar and then also goes out to Oak, we've been out, the year that I worked that ditch, that was my life, that was all I had time to do. And it's hard to get into those boxes, you cut your hands apart.
Let me see how this year goes, and we may, if we have problems, we'll address them.
People at the pond taking the water, they still gotta pay monthly for the service, right?
That's right.
Yes.
They shattered off, they're paying for.
They're paying for it, yes, they don't stop paying for it.
You don't pay by the volume, you pay by, you do pay by the volume.
Pay by the inch.
But you pay by, and, and it's not a guaranteed inch, it's a, you know, there is a, there is a general guarantee, but. If you decide to turn it off and take less, that's on you. Uh, Ms. Cherie, I see your hand is still raised, I just wanna verify that you do or do not have a question on this topic.
I do, I, I raised it and raised it back again.
I apologize, I did not see, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, when someone calls the office number, the four, three, five, six for service request. Does the answering, um, machine or whatever, uh, refer them? Is there someplace to check, like press four for service request, or no?
It, yeah, brings you to customer service.
Okay, and they do the service request.
That is correct.
Okay, then down on the irrig, on the first, um, pamphlet or flyer. Mailer, that irrigation committee, um, I think it should say, uh, meets the third Tuesday of the month at two P M. Because if I was applying for the irrigation committee, I would wanna know when it, uh, was available.
That's an excellent recommendation.
Okay, and then my other question, is this like an eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper that you're folding in half and stapling and mailing out?
No, it's a two sided post.
So a postcard.
Yes, two, you're looking at two sides, so one side will be. Yeah, it's a. One side. The other side will be the mailing logo.
Okay, that's it, alright, thanks.
Uh, but a big, oh, sorry, they're about this big, or half, like half a sheet of.
Half a sheet, yeah.
This, they're like this size, okay.
They're not the itty bitty ones?
No, they're like, uh, they're ha, they're like half, they're, they're, they're eight and a half by eleven, but, so, they're like, what are you? Director Seaman, I know you had some other edits, did you wanna go over the list of your entries?
No, that was it on that, um. The only one I had on that was the first come, first served basis for that second.
That's why we said that may, may not all be, it's not first come, first served if you're asking for more, it's a lottery. So if you're asking for, say, everyone on this committee, we're all the same leg and you guys all asked for ten extra inches and we only had twenty extra inches to give out. That's a lottery.
Okay.
It's not a first come, first served basis.
Okay, that's, that's a question then.
With the small edit to, every, uh, entire irrigation allotment made. Through the first one, I believe is the only edit we had, uh, unless I'm mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong. We would love to have you sign up on these and recommend them to be sent out. I'm so sorry, oh, two P M, I apologize, yes, absolutely, I've had the, had the time for the, uh, irrigation committee, thank you so much for that catch.
I guess the next, we finish with this topic?
I just wanna vote for you guys, if you guys recommend us sending these out the way they're written with those two small edits.
Anybody have any comments on that?
Somebody mentioned something about bolding the committee opening.
Yes, we're gonna underline it or do something to highlight it.
You want a motion? Wanna make a motion to send out this mailer?
I'll make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, I guess, review and discussing the irrigation season mailer.
Uh, no, next one down.
Next one down?
The member comments and reports.
Okay.
Just go through and ask, uh, anybody if they have any reports or anything.
Anybody got any reports, uh, anything you wanna talk about?
I, I, I've said enough.
Well, I guess. Nobody's got any comments, I guess, uh, we can adjourn and, and, uh. Okay, any agenda items for next meeting?
What, what will the, uh, G pod be bringing as agenda items?
I, I, this is for your, this is your time to tell us what you want.
That day of irrigation.
Yeah, so that's a standing item. Action item A is gonna be on the agenda all the time, so we can open this up for discussion at any time, and so we will come with some recommendation at the next meeting.
There's also a typo, um, nine, I think it should be third Tuesday.
Oh, yes, yeah, so we had a little bit of, of issue with changing, so yes, you're, that's a good pitch.
The March nineteenth is the actual day.
Yes, but it's a correct date.
Was this the third Tuesday?
It is. I know, right?
Did you guys update that little sheet that you gave us for the whole year, the date was?
We've updated it, we will.
She get it?
Who's she?
Yes, I got it, so I do have the correct dates on my calendar, I just.
It's a typo, she called a typo, that's right.
I don't mean on this, on the, on the regular sheet, remember you had that?
Yeah, 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 we fixed that.
It's on the website now too, Steve.
Yeah, that was pretty good.
Wow, can I have a motion adjourned?
I can't make motions.
Don't look at us.
I guess they don't wanna adjourn yet.
I guess not.
I make a motion that we, that we've covered everything we should adjourn.
Have a second.
I will second.
Sweet.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed?